Call the meeting to order stand for the pledge, please. Pledge of allegiance. First up Superintendent Report. Dr. Morgano.
Is Alana Lupe online? Maybe I'll wait till the end then because Tracy, you said they were going to be online?
That's what the mom emailed me. I said to get the link.
Alright, so let me hold that to the end. Snow days. We have one more left. After which we'll do virtual. That's been the pattern in the county and that way the days count for attendance days and doesn't impact our aid. Bob DeFor has been working on organizing vaccines for the schools, for staff. We have about 50 people who are interested in getting vaccinated. The only way to do that is to call a snow day when on Vaccine Day. Or at least a half day. Because they gotta go to Liberty to the county help. They have to wait 15 minutes after they get the shot. And there's 50 people. I can't see any way to do that other than take time from the day. But it increases the likelihood of us being able to bring back all the kids in the fall if our staff is predominantly vaccinated. We're planning on having summer school this summer. For rising first grade, so the current K into 1 up through grade 12. And the principals will talk about their particular program when they do their report. But I think with the virtual impact that we need to offer summer school to kids to make sure that they stay on track. Because we have some kids that don't learn well virtually. Scott has a plan to bring back kindergarten and 3rd grade. Kindergarten will be February 22nd, 3rd grade will be March 8th. And he'll explain more of that in his report. We're going to bring back as many kids as we can safely bring back. That may be the limit. We'll have to see how it works. And that's why they're spaced apart. Sports. The governor said we can have basketball, wrestling, and every other winter sport. But in school, kids have to be spaced six feet apart. It makes no logical sense. He dumped it on the county health department who said it's up to the school district superintendents. We offered sports. We were going to have basketball for girls and boys. We didn't have enough kids to make a team. So we're going to have intramural basketball. I limited that to basketball and football. I don't think we should have wrestling. And I sent out a memo to that effect. Because wrestling is the only sport you can't wear a mask while performing. And I think the contact is just too much. And the inconsistency with what the spacing has to be in every other environment. It just wasn't logical to have wrestling. You have the calendar for 21, 22. It's similar to this year's calendar with the exception of Juneteenth, which will be a federal holiday. And the snow days, we built in eight snow days again. Hopefully we won't need more than that. Our fiscal standing has changed for the better. As you know, four years ago, this school district was pretty much broke. And it took letting some good people go and tightening our belt and living within our means. But we are now in great fiscal standing. I was just going to ask Caleb to mention the detail for that.
So the state...
Caleb, come down here.
Yep. The state measures your fiscal standing with a new measure that they call the Fiscal Stress Score, which is based on a number of factors like your cash flow, how much debt you've got, whether you can make your obligations. When we first arrived here, our Fiscal Stress Score was 73.3. Now that was the highest in New York State, meaning we were in more fiscal stress than any school district in the state. We were number one, unfortunately. Since that time, which was considered significant fiscal distress by the way, we are now at 16.7. Which doesn't even warrant a designation, meaning that that level of fiscal distress is considered normal for a school district. It doesn't indicate any kind of financial difficulties. So we've dropped 60 points from the worst stressed school in the state to not on the list at all in three years.
And I want to thank you for your efforts on accomplishing that, as well as the Board of Education, who made some difficult decisions over the last three years. Thank you.
I think it was a team effort. Thank you as well. You don't get any thanks. You don't get enough.
It's just what I do. We began our recovery by letting go about, I think it was 12 people. People who were doing a good job, who had, some of whom had been here for a number of years. And those were tough decisions that had to be made. But at the end, we restored a number of those positions. At least in terms of total number. And we're going to probably add additional staff for next year. And we'll talk more about that as time goes on. Attendance. I just want to report that student attendance is comparable this year to last year. I know there's some thoughts about, are the kids attending? Are they online? And we looked at a couple of weeks this year compared to the same period of time last year. And in fact, the attendance was slightly better this year than it was last year. Graduation. It's not too soon to think about graduation. The seniors, I understand, would like to have graduation either here at the high school or at GRM on the soccer field. I'm leaning toward having it here at the high school. I think we can do it safely. And it's back to our old tradition. And is Alana Lupe online?
I'm sorry, I still don't see her.
Alana is receiving the AOK Award nominated by Anthony Delivar. Alana, he writes, would hold the door open for all the students at the end of the day. And she did that without being asked. And she deserves the AOK Award. And Tracy will make sure that she gets the certificate. Any questions from the board on anything I reported?
Any questions from any board member?
Yes.
Is anything happening with spring sports yet?
We anticipate that spring sports will go on as normal. We haven't gotten anything from the governor yet. But if he allowed winter sports, spring sports are somewhat safer. So JJ doesn't anticipate any limitations on spring sports.
Any other questions? All good? Thank you, Dr. Morgano. Scott, Krebs, you're up. Want to come down here and talk so they can hear you?
No, I'll speak up. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's fine. As long as they can hear you.
Okay, good. I was talking about summer school. We just opened up a conversation about what that would look like moving forward for this coming summer. And I have not had a conversation with staffing, with our teachers yet, but I had envisioned that we offer a program for two weeks per grade level over the summer. At the elementary level, I thought that that was more than enough time in the summer to offer that. And it's a snippet of the time that their summer program. Also, I reached out to our Helping Kids Program, which is operating during our school day. And they also have a morning and an after-school program for a couple of families. And they are willing to be part of with us and do wraparound services during the summer. So if parents that are in need of any type of care, child care throughout the summer, are looking at a program to help you kids be able to do that. They run it in other school districts similar to a summer prep program, where they do clean weeks and have activities for each week for the children. So I thought that was a very helping communication that I'd have with Ray and Helping Kids about exploring that idea to have them partner with us for the summer program. So we're still in our initial stages with that. That and Morgano briefly mentioned about bringing back to in-person education for our kindergarten and our 3rd grade. We sat down as a school district with our administrative team. We talked with food service, transformation, buildings and grounds to see if we are able to offer more instruction in person in our school. So what we did is we looked at our enrollment numbers and happened to be our kindergarten and our 3rd grade are two smallness classes. So we decided that we could start with them and see how that goes. A couple of things that were really inroads, that we really wanted to stick to the smaller numbers and be able to be safely transported on the school bus. And our concerns with giving food to children throughout the day because we're now serving the children in their classrooms rather than in the cafeteria. So there's a couple of things that we had to build into our conversation. But we sent out communication to all of our kindergarten and 3rd grade parents hoping to move that. And we also put communication out on our monthly newsletter to let all the parents at our school know that that's what we're doing going forward. We will revisit if we can safely bring back any others. But we wanted to see how this goes over those two days. So it'll probably be around March when that can be announced and see how it's going with this group of kids. The only thing I've had is that we're having conversations about our special education population. Currently attending elementary school and grades 1st, 2nd, and 3rd mainly. We do what is called a special class per children. We'll accommodate between program with an inclusion model at our elementary level. So when children are classified and need help, we typically at the 1st, 2nd, and 3rd grade level pull them out of the classroom to give them a special class in literacy or a special class in math. And we don't have a model where there's an assistant in the classroom, special education teacher, to give them an inclusive type of experience. So one of the things that we're looking at is changing our model of elementary school so that before we go to a more restrictive pull-out program, we offer a inclusive program where somebody's pushing into the classroom to help children in those grades rather than pulling the children out. So that was a conversation that we had. And I know that Morgano was talking about that might be a concern for staffing going into next year. And our summer program, as soon as, you know, we can talk about that. I know it's contingent on budget and things like that. We kind of have to allocate some funds of what that would be for staffing for the summer program. So I'll initially open it up for conversation with staff so that we see if we have interest with our staff in providing those services for things. And I believe that's it. If you have any questions?
Any questions for?
I know this right there.
Any questions for Scott?
I do.
Okay.
The kindergarten and 3rd grade, will transportation be provided by the school or parents will have to drive?
No, we will, we worked with transportation to be able to do that. And I know Mrs. Muller is working out to be giving back to the families. That would not be a concern as to be able to safely transport them.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to thank Principal Krebs for setting up the 3rd day dictionary distribution from the Rotary Club.
Thank you, Amador. I forgot to mention that. But we did have some technical difficulties. We overcame them. And Amador in the Port George Rotary was able to provide missionaries to our third graders. And he got to see them in person. They all were either in class or online with him. So we appreciate your support and empathy.
Any other questions? Well, good. Thank you, Mr. Krebs.
Thank you.
Tracy, you are up.
Okay, a couple of things. Mr. Krebs already was talking about our initial planning for summer school. We're also looking at 7th through 12th grade. That would include ELA, math, and Regents courses. We do not know if the August Regents will still happen. If it does, then we will be prepared. And I'm looking, and again, this is initial planning. I have not reached out to the staff. Just looking at July 12th through August 13th. That's a possibility. That would give them 25 days of remediation, coursework, instruction, intensive instruction. And it would go from 8:00 AM till noon. So that's where we are right now. Again, it's the initial planning. But, you know, I'm kind of excited to be able to run summer school. The other things we have is scheduling for the 21, 22 school year has already started. Surveys were sent out to the 9th through 12th grade students asking about electives, what their wants, preferences, et cetera. This survey is helping us to expand our course offerings document that the students will have access to for planning purposes. The next step is, and the scheduling team will be meeting next week to finalize this course offerings document. And then Ms. Garing will begin meeting with students starting in March so we can start scheduling. So these meetings will be in person and virtual. And it's to make sure that all students are, we had a conversation with all students regarding the 21, 22 school year. We did finally get the AP exams new testing date. Usually it happens the first two weeks of May. They are actually doing it in three different sessions. So we're looking at AP exams. A full AP exam will be taken anywhere between May 18th through the 24th. As more information comes from AP College Board, we will send that out to those students and parents that are involved with AP classes. The TSI, which is the Targeted Schools, and the School Improvement Committee, we have met twice. We are in the process of developing our action plan. We will meet one more time before the end of the month to finalize this action plan. And then I'll present it to the Board of Education. So we are in the process of that. Good news is, one of our snow days, we were supposed to give the PSAT. That, of course, had to get canceled. We do have a new date for the PSAT. We'll be giving the PSA 2 in school for free for our 10th graders on April 14th. We are also including 9th graders. So this will be one of the first times we do this. It's important that these 9th and 10th graders actually sit for a PSAT so they kind of know what's going on with the SAT and even the ACT. So again, this is for free. There is no, there is no fee attached to it. It is during the school day. The SAT, we do have a date for that. That is for the 11th and 12th graders. That will also be given in school for free. And that will be on April 27th. And they don't have to travel to any other school to take the SAT. This will give them another opportunity, again, to see where they stand in regards to these standardized assessments. I also want to congratulate Alana Lupe, Dr. Morgano, also, you know, with her AOK. You know, she shows just, you know, every day, true kindness, manners, gratitude. She's always smiling. She is definitely a good candidate, great candidate for this AOK Award. So I do want to congratulate her. I do appreciate, we got a mass donation from Livingston Manor Monticello and the, I think it was Roscoe Rotary Club. So we did get that mass donation. We really appreciate that. And I took pictures with the kids with it and then we posted it on Instagram. So we did get, kind of get some publicity from that. Mr. Krebs also talked about the requests for full-time in-person. I have been getting a lot, or numerous requests, for kids to come back to full in-person instruction. And every request I get, just please understand that I am looking at every single schedule for every student and we're making sure that we stay under the 50% capacity. And we're trying to get them in as much as possible. Transportation and Melissa Muller have been wonderful because I'm literally emailing her every day to see if we can fit these kids in. The teachers have been great and I really appreciate everybody's flexibility, especially in this fluid situation and it's ongoing change. So I do appreciate what they're doing. And that is all I have.
Any questions for Tracy and the board?
I was talking with a couple of seniors the other day and they were wondering about baccalaureate. And like cool range of that.
That, I'm assuming that would either go... I'm sorry.
Linda Boz.
I think Linda Boz does that.
Oh, she does? Okay.
I'm assuming.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No, Linda Boz will not do that. Lisa Maridrew has done it the last couple of years in conjunction with the parents who want to be involved.
Who is that?
Linda Boz in the past did it for that with other folks. But it is a true religious ceremony organized by the parents, not by the school. So any parents and seniors who want to step up, please talk to Lisa Maridrew. She always needs help.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Caleb, you're up.
Oh, I did have a student report. I'm sorry. Thank you for reminding me, Caleb.
Our student could not be here tonight because she is working. So she did send me a student report. Student Council had a successful mask fundraiser. The Interact Club is currently running their annual coat drive. Please drop off any coats that you would like to donate in the vestibule downstairs. There is a large box underneath the table. We'll be glad to take your coats. They've also, the Interact Club has also been including positive encouraging quotes in the morning announcements so every day the kids can open up to something that's happy and positive in this wonderful time. National Honor Society held a blood drive on February 5th. The first one they did in October, November was extremely successful. And they assumed that, I haven't gotten the final numbers from Ms. Ross, but it seemed to be just as successful. The Mu Alpha Theta, which is our math honor society, is continuing to hold math tutoring every Wednesday. Students need to sign up in order to receive that Google Meet code. And any questions you can ask Ms. Zub or Brittany Fonsack. But they do have free math tutoring. Sophomore class is currently selling Gertrude Hawk from the spring catalog. All orders are due by February 19th. Orders will arrive before spring break. If you have any questions or if you want chocolate, you need to reach out to a sophomore or Mrs. Ricardi. And then the other thing, the kids are so excited about sports. Now I'm done.
Alright. Caleb, you're up. Alright, so budget season is starting and some of the information is starting to come in. One thing I have now are the numbers for the tax cap. The tax cap this year is going to be somewhere in between .7 and 1%. It was 1.7%, but the money we saved on the bond comes out. It's, because that's capital payment. And we have additional pilots that have gone up and that money comes out. So the net tax cap is going to be somewhere in that .7 to 1% range, which is lower than usual. A couple of state aid issues. The state aid run from the governor has come out. In it, he does not propose, well, he proposes lowering state aid and then bridging it with the federal stimulus funds that have been approved, the ones that were approved in December. The concern that a number of school districts share, and it's just something to keep an eye out in the future, is are those funds going to be restored when the federal funds go away? Okay, so it won't affect next year, but it could affect 2022, 2023. Because right now, what's listed there is an adjustment, federal funds. Once they go away, we don't know if that's going to get restored. Another thing the governor has proposed in state aid to keep an eye out in the future is combining all expense-based aids. That's usually not great for a rural school because transportation tends to be on the higher end for us. And turning them into a block grant, saying you get this much money for transportation and for BOSIs. In the long term, it would lead to lower funds. That's the purpose of it. Other than that, our state aid is going to remain flat entirely due to the federal stimulus funds. So the concern is in the future. The 20% that was withheld, I received a letter from NICE Ed saying that that has been approved to come back to us. They're not going to dock us that 20% aid that they had said they might in the beginning of the year. We don't have the check yet, so let's not counter chickens before they've hatched. But I mean, at this point, I do have a letter from the state saying 20% is coming back to us. We're not getting that 20% cut. They did take it from us. They're going to send me a check in the next month. And we're going to be made whole for this year. The business office is almost completely back into Eldred now. Today, we actually did our first check run completely away from BOSIs. Checks printed here, everything compiled and processed here. And it will be audited here as well, so there won't be any BOSIs involvement. And this is our first check run on that. And so far, it's gone smoothly. It's been working out very well. And I think the teachers will find it's a better experience in terms of ordering things. Typically, right around now, I would give you a preliminary budget. Because of all of the shifting, I didn't think that it would be fruitful to do one right now. I wasn't particularly sure about what was happening, the 20%. That letter just came in today. So I will have a preliminary budget for you in March. We're on target for our budget this year. So the numbers are good. And that 20% is definitely going to help the school. I should have a better idea, again, that's pretty fresh information. I should have a better idea of how that's going to affect our bottom line for this year at our next board meeting. And that's also when I'll present a preliminary budget to you. We already discussed the fiscal distress score, so if there are any other questions?
Questions for Caleb and the board?
Caleb, you're talking about the governor combining expenses, aid for expenses. What happens there? Do the number, it gets lower than if you were to add them up separately?
Yes, so the, no, no, the expense-based aids. So you have, your foundation aid is your biggest chunk of aid. So of the $5.8 million, we get $3.5 million as foundation. That's like a block grant. It's just $3.5 million. That's what it is. The rest of the stuff that's on that state aid run is an estimate. Because the actual aid is based off your expenditures. So like transportation aid, we get 40-some percent of our transportation expenditures. Now that number changes from year to year. Based on the tax base, based on the poverty rates, things like that. What he wants to do, because expenses are growing, he wants to make it a block grant, just like foundation aid. So let's say we spend $1 million on transportation, we get $420 grand. He wants to come out and say, you know what? You get, and maybe he'll do it the same as last year, or maybe he'll lower it. It hasn't been said yet. You get $420. And now we'll tell you from now on whether that number goes up or not. So if transportation expenses are going up 3%, but he decides he's only going to raise your transportation aid 1.5%, you got to figure it out. And over time, it works out in the state's favor because he's not going to raise it as quick as your expenses are going to go up. And then it also changes BOSIs. And it changes your relationship with BOSIs quite a bit. Right now, if there's a cooperative service that you can get from BOSIs and it makes sense to go to BOSIs, you get BOSIs aid on it. BOSIs aid will no longer be based on your BOSIs expenses. You'll just get, if we get 500, he'll say, well, 500 is what it's set at now, your last years. And it goes up by an inflationary number. And it doesn't matter if you have any services or BOSIs or not. So you're going to start seeing people pulling back from BOSIs at that point, too. Because all of a sudden, it doesn't matter if I purchase my software or if I get a shared service from there. So that's what he's proposing. And there are 10 expense-based aids, I believe, or 11. There's building aid, transportation, BOSIs. Those are our three good ones. And then special education is one of them as well. Excess cost aid, so if a student goes and it's over $70,000, you get a percentage of aid. That would become like a block grant. So that's a proposal he's had. He's proposed that every year since I've started working here and before. So it's just something to watch. This year, though, they're getting a little further and further into the This year though, um, they're, they're getting a little further and further into the hole. I mean, what you said, that they were at about $6 billion in the hole before COVID and now they're like 25. So the further in the hole they get, the more likely it is that the legislature says, okay, we'll cave on that. So it's just something to watch. It's not something I expect to be a, a big issue next year. Um, but as Dr. Morgano has taught me, it is better to plan beyond one year. So you try to keep an eye on those things. Especially before, if you ever want to make a hire or anything like that, you want to make sure you're going to have the money in the future.
Yeah, that could be a nightmare.
Um, so, so that's his proposal. And again, it wouldn't affect this year, it would affect inflation. So over time, five years from now, you might be getting $70,000 less than you would have.
So what reserve accounts would, would help us in the event, say special ed somehow gets capped and we have to find more money than our aid allows?
Well, there technically isn't a reserve for special ed.
That's right.
You can reserve for capital. You can reserve for workers' comp. One of the smarter ones to do, uh, workers' compensation is a good one because one of the reasons for that is workers' compensation reserve can be used for your regular workers' compensation bill. It doesn't have to be used for, uh, some kind of extraordinary thing. Our workers' comp bill is around 145,000 a year. So it's almost as if, if you wanted to use it, you could pay your regular bill with that and then use the money you were going to pay your regular bill with for the other thing. So that's not a special ed reserve, but there's nothing saying you can't pay your regular bill with it and then pay your special ed with the money that you were going to use for it. So that's one that I would use. Unemployment is another one, but it's kind of like that.
Yeah.
Where you can use it for your regular unemployment bill.
Good.
But those are the kinds of ones, yeah, that's what I would put it into. Those are the easiest ones to get access to and to use the money from.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Caleb? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Short and brief, I'd just like to thank Dr. Morgano and Caleb and the board in getting that physical stress number down where we need to be. We want to shine in areas, we don't want to shine in that area. We don't want to be first place there.
No.
We'd rather be last place. If you want to be last, that's where you want to be.
No, you don't want to be in any place.
Well, that's true too.
No designation is the number.
I don't want to be fir-, I don't want to be first.
You don't want.
We don't want to be first. Public comment on the consent agenda items. We'll do the same, we've always done, if something comes in, Tina, we'll take it or whatever, but right now, on the consent agenda only. Public comment. Comment on the consent agenda only, public comment. Nothing?
No.
Okay. Everybody's had a chance to review the consent items. Is there any? I need a motion on consent items 401 through 703.
I'll make that motion.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? We all had a chance to review them, is there any discussion on them?
No.
Okay, at this point, I'll take a vote. Nancy? Kristen?
Hi.
Yes.
Yes. All ayes for the records. Any old business to come before the board? No? Any new business to come before the board? Nothing? Okay, second public comment.
I have something.
Go ahead. Who are you?
Okay, um, it's Bonnie Graham.
Oh, okay, sorry Bonnie.
Hi, hi. Just, just wanted to make sure that I had a couple of ones to speak with you all. Um, first of all, it was really nice to see that we got out of our fiscal distress. Um, I certainly appreciate all the efforts of Dr. Morgano, uh, the Board of Education and, and Caleb. I'd also like to remind everyone that the teachers moved their health insurance payments to 90% immediately in a give to the districts of the fiscal crisis, um, that went up several years ago. I also question, um, I wonder if we have reached out to the towns, the town Highland and the town Allland regarding the rec, rec programs that they generally run in our school districts, um, during the summer and how that's going to accommodate with what we're planning on doing differently with, um, the Healthy Kids Program. And then another thing I was wondering about was, I, I heard Mrs. Ferrera speak about the AP dates for June and for May, but I also understand they're available in June and so I hope that we're exploring all options on AP dates, um, and not just, um, May dates. Those were the couple of things that I wanted to ask, uh, to make sure that is looked into this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. So we chat, we'll reach out to the towns?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Bonnie. Any other comment on anything? With that being said, no more, Tina?
Nothing else.
I need a motion to go to an executive session to talk about contracts and personnel.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
We're all good to go then. Caleb, you're going in with us.
Yep.
Will you be coming back?
There'll be no business afterwards, so it'll be all done. The meeting is done. All right, we don't.